...the city of Lake Forest meeting the whole Monday, August 16th. And roll call please.
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhaus.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Widman.
Here.
Alderman Moore is absent. Alderman Marsh is absent. Alderman Hanrahan.
Here.
Alderman Looby.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Seven present to absent Mr. Chairman, Weah McQuarum.
Thank you. Second item, approval of minutes of June 7th, 2010 committee meeting on page two. Any changes, corrections, additions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item three, report of the city's 150th anniversary celebration presented by our great former mayor, Mike Rumel, who is the chairman of the committee.
Thank you. So this is what it looks like from over here, huh? I never knew. Now I got the feeling. Well, I want to thank you all for having me tonight. First, there's people I want to thank. And that's everybody on the committee who will be, list will be up there. They've worked very hard so far to try to put together a program that we felt appropriate for the city. I want to thank Mayor Cowie and his wife Lisa for coming to a lot of the meetings and sitting down with me on other ideas that have come up. He spent a lot of time doing that. And Jim, I know you've got another things to do, so thank you for doing that. I really do appreciate it. And thank you to city staff, to Bob Kylie, Susan Banks, who's a, who's just wonderful, Susan Kelsey, and Rosie, who really did help a lot in formulating some of these ideas. So I want to thank them. And really, who I want to thank is all the committee people, because we're going to show you who the ad hoc committee is. But there have been a lot of people working on this and a lot of organizations working on this, especially the Historical Society and others who have really put a lot of effort into it. So I'm going to outline what we're proposing. And I'm looking to you for guidance as to, are we going in the right direction? Is this the craziest idea you ever heard yet? And we have some of those for you. I'm going to share a few of them with you. Or are we going down the right path? Because our next meeting is next week, and we would like to nail down what we're going to do and how we're, what we're proposing to do and how we're going to do it. But nothing is in stone at this point, so anything can be changed or done to change the program. So the first thing up is the Historical Society is looking to put together a legacy project. And this legacy project is really talking about the, all the institutions, all Lake Forest institution, organizations, businesses, clubs, and groups, who, their history and where they are, where they've come from over the last 50 years. Because a lot of these organizations have older than 50 year history, but a lot of this has never been written down. And Art Miller is kind of leading this charge to help put this information together so we can have a timeline of all the organizations, where they are and where they've been. And that's going to start right now, putting this together so we can have it for next year. Our kickoff is hoped to be the tree lighting ceremony in November, at which time we, thanks to again help the city staff, Dan Martin, we are going to have a banner across Market Square announcing that it is our 150th anniversary. And we hope to keep that banner up for the whole Christmas time and into the spring. The Market Square merchants have put together a program, and I'm going to let Susan talk about that for a minute, but they've put together a program to help facilitate our 150th.
Thank you. The business district is, all the business districts are really gearing up for an exciting month of activities for the holiday seasons. Starting at the tree lighting ceremony, there will be a number of events over the weekend, carolers, there'll be Santa at the South Gate, there'll be free dog treats, photos with your dog, photos with your family. There'll be family style meals, there'll be free gift wrapping. In the middle of the month, December 11th, there will be live reindeer in Market Square from 10 to 2. There'll be free trolley rides around the community, looking at the entire historic area. And the key to all these activities will be the city's website, but also the chamber's website, and a coupon book that we're putting together. So this is the summer coupon book that's finishing up. We will have a new coupon book out the first week in October. And we'll have all the activities in there, the lyrics for all the songs at the tree lighting, and that's the key to your activities for the summer, for the holiday season.
I will tell you one of the alternative proposals that was for the tree lighting, just to get you how far, we kind of let this open to the public, open to the committee. But one of them was, they wanted to send a Guinness Book of Records with the most cork popping. I was immediately told by Chief Berger that that wasn't a very good idea, so, and Mayor Cowie wasn't exactly behind that one. But we could pop 4,000 corks, I think it was 4,000 champagne bottles, no matter what size, being put down in Market Square. I know my dog is certainly an alcoholic, he would have drank all of them, so we had to watch that. That was one of the ideas that is proposed out there, but people have been thinking, is my point, and we've been going to all edges of it. In February, we're going to actually have, we're going to try to have a reenactment of the actual founding of the city on February 21st. For those who don't know, they came up on a train, looked around and said, yep, this looks like the place, and left. So we're hoping to have that, but we're also, the Historic Society is then going to start a lost and found exhibit at the Historical Society, and an interactive timeline will be launched then. So the Historical Society's played a great part in this, and we hope that everybody will be actively involved in that. In March, we're talking about having architectural chores, and our challenge, or my challenge has been to corporations that we wish to plant 150 trees in Lake Forest for 150 anniversary. We want to tag them, mark where they are, so that the 200th can have a challenge of, hey, you planted 200 trees, and what happened to our 150? So we're hoping to get schools involved in this as well. And also, there's going to be a witness tree, which is trees that have already witnessed the first 150 years, and we're going to be identifying those around Lake Forest. So again, the Historical Society's been working on that Witness Tree Arbor Day program, and then our part of the committee has been working on getting donations for 150 trees to be planted around the city where we can actively map where they are. In May, we're talking about having garden tours and a commemorative 150th book. July 4th is the standard festival, but we're hoping that the Parks and Rec will be joining us in having these festivities. On August 4th, we're talking about doing a Lake, the Lake Forest Day. We're trying to have a non-academical sunrise service at the beach for all the nominations, invite all the churches to come down and have a sunrise service that starts before Lake Forest Day kicks off. Our thought process was more people in town, more people aware of it, more people down at the beach, they're liable to stay for the parade and stay for the events of that day. And then our last event, which we're talking about, is to have an ice cream social and a mini Taste of Lake Forest concert, and also fireworks in the downtown area. We're talking about closing off Market Square for this day. It's the day before the art fair. It's also the day after the 100th anniversary football game at the high school, so we figured there'd be people here for the 100th anniversary game of the high school. There would be, we'd have our event, and then there'd be people who were here for the art fair. So we're talking about doing a Taste of Lake Forest, a ice cream social, and then having a concert out back here. And we're not going to name who that is yet, but we're negotiating with a name artist to have a concert there. So those are the items that we are thinking about. Now, our alternative event, which I will tell everyone about now, which Chief Howell put the guideline on, was that we were going to have a, we were going to try to have fireworks throughout the city and light up Lake Forest. And our original intention was to have 12 sites where fireworks would go off simultaneously, have it broadcast on TV, and also have the college, who would be involved in this, do a radio simulcast. So no matter where you were, if you were sitting in your, at home in your couch, you were sitting in your backyard, you were at a block party, no matter where you were, you could see this. After a lot of talk about it, A, the logistics of doing, it turned out not to be 12, but more like 18, and then more like 24 sites. And getting 24 fire departments to come out here on any given day was going to be a little bit tough, because our manpower could take one of these sites alone. And then number two, the committee felt it wasn't as inclusive as it could have been by bringing more people to one area and more people to town to celebrate this. So that's why we came up with this alternative idea that we're now working on. And as I said, this is all a work in progress. None of this is written in any kind of stone at this point, and we're looking to you for direction and advice or guidance or any changes you thought should be made. Some of the other ideas are a local time capsule and then CD of local music through the years. The Symphony is doing a concert March 11, in 2011, and it's dedicated to our 150th. And I do have to say that a lot of organizations have really stepped forward to want to do things in conjunction with us. So there's only so many things the committee felt they could do and do them well. So, you know, manpower is limited. If we, all the ideas we had listed on paper, if we wanted to do all of them, then every citizen would have to be involved with the committee, because we just couldn't get them all done. So we tried to pick the best of what we could do and then ask other organizations to get involved. Rag Dale is getting involved with us, and we'll talk about that program when it's finally finalized, but the Symphony's involved with us. So there's other groups looking to get involved to try to celebrate our 150th. So that's what we're proposing at this time. The advisory committee is listed up there. As I said, Jim and Lisa have been very helpful to us. And then the other people have all been involved, virtually all of them have been to a meeting or two to give their ideas, and especially to Ann Whipple, who never ceases to continue to donate her time and efforts to the city. And then there's over 50 people that are on the steering committee, this is the advisory committee. So that's where we are today. And I just wanted to let everybody know and then try to get some feedback from you as to your thoughts or ideas about the programs.
Well, first, I just want to thank you, Michael, for all your hard work, because I know this is not easy to corral, the number of people that are already signed up to help. It's a lot bigger group than that, and the meetings are well attended and there's a lot of great ideas. I am kind of encouraged that we scaled back the fireworks from 24 sites to one, because I did not want to be the mayor that burned down the city on the 150th anniversary.
But you would be memorialized for that.
And the other idea, I guess, that was kicked around was for me to zip line across Market Square on February 2011. It might still be open, I don't know.
That one's still open. Well, that's where the banner is going to be hanging, so we'll just zip line them on the banner.
Mike, one thought I had, since February 11, February 21, is sort of smack in the middle of winter, it's a little unfortunate, but I thought that the events that you had listed there were rather passive. And I was wondering if it might be a day that you could create a little more activity. I mean, you had a launching of a, I don't know, the time capsule, oh, here we go. Lost and Found, interactive timeline launch. Since it is the actual day itself, I was wondering if, just give some thought about how to make it a little more, as I say, active as opposed to passive. The timing of it is unfortunate, because it's February.
The committee has wrestled with that. Half of the committee said, hey, we're in Florida then. And the other half of the committee said, gee, is it going to be 70 degrees or is it going to be 30 below zero? Tell us which one, and then we'll tell you how active we'll be. So, well, Stu, it's something we've really wrestled with. If anybody's got any ideas, we're more than happy to help it. But we were talking about actually getting a train car, a Lake Forest train car, and bringing it up that day at the prescribed time and date, and having a reenactment along with period. Pardon?
Is that a Saturday?
That is, do we know what day it is?
Monday.
Monday.
That's pretty active.
Isn't it President's Day, or is that the weekend before?
That's a good question, I don't know.
We could all dress up like 150 years.
Maybe the next day.
You could all dress up as your favorite former mayor.
There you go.
It isn't Halloween, it's the reenactment. Any other thoughts?
Anything? Anything else?
I mean, I think the September 3rd, I thought the block parties were created, but I think this is a better idea. I do worry about trying to get everyone downtown, especially if you're going to do a fireworks show, because I can't really picture where parking, even gathering. I mean, I think of the size of people who turn out for 4th of July, or even the beach event, and it's a, it's a big group, so.
Well, because it's Saturday, we're hoping to use all the train lots on the east side of the train tracks, and we're also planning to do the fireworks off of the golf course so that no one would be near the fireworks, because we may need a larger trajectory, a drop area than we would in normal fireworks to get them high enough so you can see them from Market Square and not have to leave Market Square. That was the thought process. And also, with the city parking lots being available, we thought hopefully there'll be enough parking for everybody. Another issue we have to wrestle with, David, as to how we're going to do parking.
Yeah, but September 3rd is a focal, it sounds great. Who gets to light the fireworks off on September 3rd?
Well, we figured the mayor would be doing that, isn't I?
Will you ever go back to the beach?
Why would you do the fireworks on a beach, Mike? Put a barge out there.
Again, the problem is you couldn't see that from downtown, and then you have to get people to the beach, and transportation was a pretty big cost.
Was that a big problem in the?
Well, transportation was a big cost with, with, just with the 100th celebration. So if we wanted to get five times the number of people, we'd have to have five times the number of buses, so our budget, we are not on a big budget for this, as you all well know. And there was some, there was a great debate within the group about fundraising, and are we going to go out and fundraise against the Park District for fireworks? Are we going to go out and fundraise against other non-for-profit organizations and say, hey, we want to get X amount of dollars in? And then, being sensitive to what's going on, you say, hey, you know, how much do you want to fundraise for a, one time, the fireworks aren't that tough, but getting people down to the beach is a big issue.
Any other questions? It's a great start. You guys are doing tremendously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we'll keep you informed as how we're going, as after our next meeting, we'll just give maybe a brief update sometime in the near future.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you very much. Our next item, item four, is report on open government transparency and technology presented by our city manager, Bob Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. The next two presentations that are before you really are at the direction of City Council some years ago, when the council really encouraged the staff to continue to seek out new technologies, use of the website, use of the internet, so forth, that we could continue to provide a high level of service to our residents, be much more responsive to our residents. And more importantly, I think, in this day and age, is residents are looking in various ways, shapes, and forms to communicate with us. They don't use the typical write a letter, come to a council meeting, stop in at City Hall, and so forth. You know, we're getting emails at 2 o'clock in the morning from this foreign country, or this or that, and we want to try and make it as easy as possible for our residents to communicate with us. And at the same time, we're getting greater and greater demands, and Beth will go into that in a little more detail, with the freedom of information laws and the access to public records and so on and so forth. So we have before you this evening two very exciting initiatives, and fairly inexpensive initiatives, that we're going to be rolling out here to the community over the course of the next three to four months, that we hope they will find that it does make government more accessible to them, makes government more transparent to them, and at the same time, doesn't put undue burden on existing city staff to be responsive to their needs for more information. So with that, I'll turn it over to Karina Walters, who will take us through the first presentation on GovQA.
Thanks, Bob. Good evening, Chairman Hanrahan and Committee of the Hall members. Yeah, I can't find the clicker. Thanks, Beth. So a council initiative is transparency and enhancement of communications to our residents. In an environment of tight budgets, city staff, as Bob has indicated, has continued to research new initiatives and ways in providing consistent and timely communications and customer service to our residents. This evening, Beth and I are here to show the viewers at home the two new programs the city will be rolling out within the next few months. The first program is the GovQA. GovQA is a 24/7 online citizen support center that will create a centralized, open communicative environment, both internally and externally, seeing more citizen involvement with fewer resources. The second program that we will be discussing is ClerkBase, which is an online document search and retrieval solution, making public documents available instantly. And again, Beth will go into that a little bit more. Yep, I guess so. So let's talk a little bit about transparency and open meetings. You might recall a little over a year ago, excuse my voice, I have daycare germs, a little over a year ago, Lisa Madigan's office, along with the Chicago Tribune, launched a media campaign, talking almost weekly, about open meetings and freedom of information. And it was kind of all spearheaded from the Blago fiasco and how lots of people were requesting documents from state agencies, and they were not getting the requests that they, that they were requesting, and they were public documents. They should have been allowed to get them, yet they were denied for no reason. So a little over a year ago, Lisa Madigan's office spearheaded an ethics committee, and now we have a complete rewrite of the Freedom of Information Act and some changes to the Open Meetings Act. So staff, when this kind of took place a little over a year ago, we internally started talking about how is staff going to be responsive to the residents based under these new demands that the state has put on us with the changes of FOIA. We now have, instead of seven business days, we have five business days to respond to regular requests. But also, just in general, with technology changing, people want information, and they want it now. They don't understand that maybe there were layoffs, or that people are on vacation, and there's only two other people in the department. They want to have access to information on their schedule, and rightfully so. Business is changing, technology is changing, and so city staff needs to change as well. So we spearheaded internally, looking at different solutions that are out there, knowing that we are on a budget. And so these are a couple of the solutions that we're going to talk about tonight. So I just put a slide up there about important, the importance of transparency, open government, open meetings. These are all things that our citizens are expecting from us. The key to transparency, when staff started talking about this issue, there's a few things that we said need to be at our focus. Making public meetings more accessible, giving residents enough time to prepare for the upcoming meetings. Even though the state law is that we only have to post public agendas 48 hours in advance, we start getting calls a couple of weeks in advance from residents, what's on the next coming agenda? Is this going to be talked about? Is that going to be talked about? Sometimes we know, sometimes we don't. And so getting information out there on the website or different electronic means that are available to us is very apparent, it's important to our residents, and they expect it. Make it convenient for residents to access the full public meeting agenda by putting everything online in a text, easy-to-read, searchable format. The couple of solutions we're going to talk about, it's basically going to be, we prepare the agenda packets as we normally do, we submit it to the vendor that we're using, and then residents will be able to access the complete packet that the press and the council members and the other board members get. They'll be able to put in a simple word, and all of that information is going to pop up very easily, rather than them having to dig through different layers throughout the website. It's also going to empower residents to have two-way communications with us. One thing that we find is that residents contact us, and they know we have a website, they may not know where to find it on the website. Right now, it's very departmentalized, and so this is going to, hopefully, these solutions that we're going to show you are going to make it very easy for residents to find what they're looking for. Common obstacles to open government. It looks a little wordy, but we just threw up a few things that we were thinking of. Staff challenges. Traditional offline communication services lack the level of detail and convenience demanded by citizens. It goes back to kind of the timeframe that I was speaking of. Residents don't want to have to call between 8:00 and 4:30, leave a message, and wait for the appropriate person to call them back. They want to be able to search it, just like they would any other subject, where they go on Google, put in a few words, and the information comes up instantly. We're hoping to get there. So this is one of the reasons that we're looking at these new solutions. Managing the vast amounts of data that we have coming into our offices. As part of the changes to the sunshine laws, there's a lot more constraints on staff to retain lots of different documents, either permanently or for long periods of time. So that's another challenge for staff. There's a significant time investment for staff to fulfill all of the public information requests with the new demands that we have starting January 1. I've now fulfilled citywide, because now as the FOIA officer, all of the public information requests come to me first. So as one of the city managers' performance manage, performance management items that we're tracking, we've now doubled our freedom of information requests in comparison to last year. And I think it's just based on people are not afraid to email, fax, call, and request information, and they expect it to have it rather quickly. We also have some budget cuts and increased workloads. As you know, we did lay some staff off in the last year, and our budget, our department budgets are getting any bigger, and so we have to be more creative in how we approach these kinds of state demands that are imposed on our offices. And then some of the citizen challenges are, they have long waiting periods to receive public information, often caused by citizens to lose the opportunity to voice their opinion. I know we've had plenty of times where someone didn't realize a certain item was on the agenda, and then they call the next day and they say, what happened? I forgot, or I didn't realize it was on the agenda last night, didn't, wasn't there a mailing? And we said, well, you know, there were legal notices, there were public notices, possibly it was in Lake Forest, or, but still somehow they didn't get the information, because they're too busy running, you know, their own professional and personal lives. And so we're trying to come up with ways to respond to those types of issues. And then citizens find it more difficult to understand the actions deliberations and votes after the fact. One of the challenges that I have is, after a long council meeting where there were a lot of items on the agenda, I get quite a few phone calls from people just following up. I know there was a lot of discussion, and then the motion was made, and then they went on to the next item really fast. I don't really understand exactly what they passed or what they were talking about, and so.
And that doesn't include questions from the elected officials themselves.
So hopefully, these solutions will help us be able to post information online, have it easily accessible, and cut down on some of the phone calls that we get, but also make it more convenient for the residents to access the information that they want. Prior to Jennifer Snyder and Mary Warkus of GovQA actually getting into the nitty-gritty of the program itself, I wanted to kind of just give you an example of something that we have probably on an annual basis, that GovQA is going to actually help us to be better prepared and/or have a consistent communication to the community. So I call this my wheel of communication. For example, every spring and in the winter, we do receive calls from residents discussing the potholes that are out in the various streets and roads.
Discussing, that's a.
Just pull it out. Well, GovQA, as Beth mentioned, this is going to give a resident the opportunity that, you know, if.
that, you know, if they were driving in the morning and they saw the pothole, they forgot, they wanted to report it, but they forgot, maybe they're up at midnight or 2:00, 3:00 working on something else and want to get that into the computer. So, what they would do is, they would go to our city website, they would fill out a service request, basically indicating that I saw a pothole, potentially identifying the location, maybe adding a picture if they had their iPhone or a cellular phone with them, and essentially submitting that request to the city. On the backend, that request is going to be submitted to the appropriate department who will in turn handle the request and/or fulfill it. In addition to potentially sending an email, a resident, if they're on the road, could call staff. We can in turn submit the information online, and it would as well go to the appropriate department personnel. Once that communication, that initial email communication is routed, the resident will receive a communication saying, "Thank you for your inquiry or your concern. City staff will get back to you within 48 hours with a response." Now, whether or not there's a program implemented, there may, there may not be, depending on the inquiry, staff will have the opportunity to continue communications with the resident. So, if this inquiry can take three weeks, depending on what it is, there's that constant communication between the two. Once the inquiry has been complete, again, there's the track record of both the resident as well as the city employee to receive the notification that the inquiry has been complete. In addition to my wheel of communication, or GovQA's wheel of communication, we've just modified it a bit, we do plan on having a list of frequently asked questions available. So, for example, if I receive a call in City Hall regarding building permit process, I may not know the answer right away. However, I could, should the question be on the frequently asked questions, I can immediately go to GovQA, or any of the aldermen could go to GovQA, look up the question, and provide the appropriate response to the department, or to the resident. That's going to ensure a consistent communication method, so we will lessen the calls of, "Well, this department said this, that department said this, what's the actual process for building, for the building permit request?" With this, I'd like to pass it to Jennifer Snyder, the Vice President of Sales, and Mary Workis, the Manager of Client Relations for GovQA. GovQA is a local business and is the world leader in web-based action centers for premier customer service.
Thank you, Karina. Thank you, thank you for letting us come out this evening and explain a little bit more about what Lake Forest is about to undertake. Again, I'm Jennifer Snyder, and I'm going to go through a couple of slides that are going to show you a little bit about how the system looks and feels, and how your residents are going to be able to use the system, as well as how the staff will be able to manage through the system. But just to kind of back up for just a second and give you a little bit of background on WebQA, we are a local Illinois-based company. We've been doing business here in Illinois since the year 2000. We've got hundreds and hundreds of cities nationally using our products, and here in Illinois, we have over 40 cities using our, cities and counties using our system. One of the things I'd like to congratulate Lake Forest on choosing our product is because it's going to be a system that's going to be scalable. So, now that you're just starting to begin this process of adding interactive tools and self-service and providing a centralized system, you'll see that this type of system services citizens in communities of 5,000 all the way up to large cities and large counties servicing millions. For example, DuPage County uses our products, and then smaller cities here in Illinois like Shorewood, Shanahan, Wakanda, they're going to be using a system like ours as well, and they're going to scale it to fit their needs today. So, the system will be able to serve your needs today and grow as your needs grow as well. One of the other things to keep in mind is that the product is a hosted solution. So, in order to take on a product like this, it fits very well in this tight budget, these tight budget times because there's no hardware and no software to purchase. It's all going to be hosted on our data centers and our, in our data facilities, and you're just going to be subscribing to the service. So, Karina, could you change slides for me, please? Here, you're going to get a quick sample of what your site looks like, and it's kind of a small one. We'll jump back to a bigger slide so we can walk through it a little bit in just a second. But I do want to point out that we do take on the look and feel of your website. We want to make the experience as comfortable as we can for citizens in that self-service environment. So, they want to be able to feel as though they are still on your city website, and they're still accessing all your city services from that same look and feel, making it very easy to navigate. So, if we jump over to the next slide, you can see this slide's going to break down the details a little bit more for you. Some of the things that Karina was talking about were the FAQ section or the knowledge base. What's different about our knowledge base than what you've seen in other websites or might currently have out on the website is that ours is kind of living and breathing. It's going to act as an auto-answer facility. So, as you build your knowledge base, as you start using a centralized system, and all departments are participating, you're going to grow that library of knowledge. And as you grow that library of knowledge, the self-service auto-answering functionality will become more and more effective. So, even for the staff internally who are trying to seek out information on other departments so they can provide the same consistent message, and then those citizens who are trying to do things after hours are going to continue to see that knowledge base grow and be more effective. And then, with the service requests as well, you're going to customize all of your service requests so that they are very specifically capturing the information needed for Lake Forest staff to manage them appropriately. So, they're not canned, they're not static, they're going to change based on the needs of your environment. So, pothole is a good excuse, a good example, although I didn't bring a shovel and I have no asphalt with me. I do help you manage potholes. We're going to know exactly what kind of information you want to capture so that your crews can go out and manage those effectively and not have to go searching out more information, following up on things, but trying to keep it as efficient as possible a process. And then, because we are capturing customized data, it's going to make for some really strong reporting tools on the backend. Some of the, that's great. I just wanted to mention that on that landing page, the other, the other portion I wanted to point out was that you're going to capture all of the self-service tools that you have within Lake Forest, not just my tools. We're going to bring them all into one action center to make it very easy for your citizens to have that self-service environment. This is a quick look at the backside of the system or the administrative side of the system. So, you can see that staff members will get kind of an easy inbox of what's, what's out there for them to manage, whether that's a department head view or just an individual staff member. Some things to see are, you can customize views on the left-hand side, so they're going to work, you're going to be able to customize a view so that you can see exactly what you need to see and nothing else, making it very easy for you to manage. Quick snapshots of things like red dots that can show you that things are out of compliance, just some easy tools to help you manage things effectively. Go ahead, Karina. This is a snapshot of what the citizen history looks like. Because everyone will now be working in a centralized system, you're going to have really strong audit trails and history of all of your communications with citizens. So, you'll know what folks have been told and what residents have been told in the past, and how many times they might be calling or questioning about a certain issue so that you can know where you need to improve in communications, improve on services, and just generally follow up with a very consistent manner. All that'll be at everyone's fingertips when necessary. Go ahead. This is just a quick snapshot of what our reporting looks like. Because all of the fields in the system are custom fields, you're able to design reports based on each department or each type of issue so that you can really kind of drill in and see the information you're looking at. Great for helping with budgeting, planning, resource deployment, those type of things. This is where I'd like to actually stop right now and turn this over to Mary Workis. Mary Workis is your implementation specialist. She's going to be managing the whole deployment of the system within Lake Forest, and she's going to talk for just a couple of minutes on how that's going and how, how we plan on doing things and how we actually keep up, keep tabs on things and keep improving. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello. As Jennifer stated, I have been working with Karina and her entire committee to implement your system, and so far, we've had a great start. And actually, I don't often work with an entire committee on GovQA, it's usually one or two people. And it's been very helpful to have a bunch of key players from different departments because you want, your implementation process, probably the most important piece, to get off on the right foot. Which also brings me to your return on investment. Now, Jennifer and Karina, everybody has talked about, yes, this is going to be wonderful for your residents, but also, you guys are also going to see some benefits as well because you'll be able to run these return on investment reports that will actually show how much money you're saving per year, per month. I have some cities that actually like me to send it every month so they can show it off and see how much you're saving on emails, postage, faxes, that are coming in on all of these service requests. Because now, you'll have a centralized area where your residents are submitting it on the website and not sending in that letter or that email. So, you can see that government saved from $3,000 to $30,000 per month. And, and the implementation process really helps, you know, if you start, start off right, you're going to continue to grow and continue to add more to the system. And GovQA also, we constantly take in enhancements, we're constantly doing releases every quarter to make our system better and more customizable for you and make sure all your needs are met. So, with that, I'd like to hand it back to Beth, who's going to finish it off, but thank you so much.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
I actually have two quick questions.
Sure.
One is, does it go from our own homepage and then link automatically into your system?
Yes.
Okay. And the second one is, how do you track the people who send in notices? Is it tracked from their computer address or is it tracked from information that they put in stating who they are and their address and then adds them up that way? You know, do they know they're being tracked? And how do you track them when they send it in?
When they come in from the website, they will fill out, they'll, they have the option to create an account or submit anonymously. If they create an account, they'll give their information. You can have required fields, your name, your phone number, your address. One field that is always required is your email address. And they also even can create a password to check status of their requests and questions that they've submitted as well. So, they can always go back and, you know, see where everything stands instead of calling all of you guys, you know, constantly. And then, in turn, they, when they call in, the staff members will be asking for their email address first, and if they don't have an account, they'll create one for them.
So, they're tracked by information that they give in, so they have to agree to that in order to be in the system to be tracked?
Correct. And then, there is the option to submit anonymously if you choose to, in which case, you know, we would not have any of their information. And we can add a blurb at the top to say, obviously, if you're submitting anonymously, don't, you're not going to get a reply because we don't know who you are.
You answered that very well, thank you.
The only thing that I'd like to add to that is, if you were actually, you went to our city's webpage, the homepage, we would actually go into four residents, and again, you can see in the screen that we've got every program or potentially another provider. So, for Croya, if you wanted to find out about the youth programs and how to sign up for any of those programs, you would click into Croya and it would automatically take you to the Croya's website. For the clerk, clerk base that Beth is going to continue to discuss, you do have the opportunity of clicking into meeting agendas, and it will automate, automatically take you to that clerk base site.
So, your top line will change up there where now you go to government, and then you're going to get...
You will.
Meetings and all that other, or is that still going to stay the same?
It will, but you will still see the City of Lake Forest site, so it will seem as a seamless transition for the resident to actually hop in.
But that top line where we go now, back on our homepage, when you go up there now and you're looking for recreation, you get a dropdown and it lists all the different things. That will stay the same?
It will.
And that will still link over then to the new system?
Yes, we're going to make sure that things are facilitated together.
That's good.
And married together.
Just a clarification, if someone's actually asking for documents, they can, it can't be, I mean, they have to put their name and address and...
Right.
Things like that. These are just, if they're sending in for a pothole or comments, they can be anonymous.
But the downloads will be able to get without having, I mean, if you're asking for a meeting agenda, they should just be able to download that, right?
That is correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And a resident or anyone would have the ability to go on and say, and ask for a FOIA request. And if they wanted a FOIA request, they would have to fill it out, and it would, again, be submitted to Beth and the appropriate department in order who could fulfill the request and get back to the resident within the time specified.
Okay.
Are the alderman going to be, and the mayor going to be on the system?
On the system from what I'm standing...
Well, I mean, we obviously get a lot of emails and a lot of questions from people...
Right.
That we then forward to staff or answer ourselves.
Right.
Could you copy the mayor on all these?
I mean, is the communication, is there any thought to putting us on here so that if people want to communicate with us, rather than having to go find our email address or get our phone number, that they can, you know, each alderman will have a name on here that that can come to?
We could certainly do that.
I don't know, it's just...
Well, I think what we're trying to avoid, though, is, let's just say you're getting phone calls about, is a compost center open on this Saturday? And that's what the frequently asked question. So, even if you get those kind of calls, you should be encouraging people to go to GovQA to see if that question is there. Our goal is actually to reduce the number of calls that you're getting and encourage people that they don't have to call you if there's a pothole in front of their house. They know that they can go on the system, get it into the system, and that it'll be tracked and it will be taken care of accordingly.
But if there's an issue going on that they want to get to the alderman, they could, and I think the question is, can they go to our Lake Forest website, put something on there, and then it'll be broadcast to us all or individually?
Sure.
So, it's sort of an in-house mail.
Right, and we could look at setting something up.
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if, or if we set something up that if someone asks a question that it, you know, an email gets generated to the alderman. Because I think a lot of people, times people come to us because they want to make sure that we're aware of it and that we're sort of monitoring it and shepherding it through the process.
Right.
Even though that's not something we usually have to do. We usually turn it over to staff, and they're very responsive and they take care of it. But I think the citizens feel better that way. So, I don't know, it's just something to think about. I haven't thought it through, obviously, just hearing about it, but, you know, somehow, it feels like a lot of requests do come in through the alderman, and then we turn them over to staff. And then, from that perspective, in terms of monitoring and stuff, you know, we won't be taking advantage of the system if we can't then, you know, close the loop on that.
And I think we can certainly work with the GovQA people and work through that. I guess I want to be sensitive to that you think you're getting a lot of calls. They could triple or quadruple if you're getting copied on all of these in a course of a day. And I think also then, if you are somehow linked to that, then there's that expectation that you're going to get back to them.
Okay.
So, I think what we want to do is, is make you aware of them, but not to overburden you with what the calls are that are coming in.
The only thing that I might add to Bob's comments is that we could set it up to where we do have a report for you if you would like it weekly, monthly, versus you being potentially copied on every email, whatever the desire is.
That I don't want, not everybody.
We'll show you what your options are because you might want it just for your ward.
Well, I think sometimes a resident will go on the website and want to send us an email concerning an issue in the ward, not to fill, well, sometimes to fill a pothole, but it'll be kind of a general one, and they'll want to send it to both aldermen in the ward as a resident. And rather than having to send two out or look up the addresses, they could find that send it, and then it would go to our email.
Okay.
I got a question for you, Karina. As far as staff, how do you work with this program in following up to a resident and getting a response to them, obviously in a timely manner into knowing that someone on staff has followed up? Is there a way then you go back and have a checks and balances within so you know that someone followed up and there's a response out? How does that work?
How that, great question, and how that does work is, each department has a facilitator. And if there is an individual that has not responded maybe within 48 hours, and I, I don't want you to get hung up on 48 hours because it depends on the issue. However, there is a mechanism that allows us to as well notify the facilitator for that department and/or department head in order to kind of track that and see what's the holdup, if you will, on the, on the issue. But as well, I think it's important with this two-way communication that staff as well, is if it is going to take longer than, you know, three, four, or five days or whatever a certain, whatever an appropriate time is, that there is that open communication online. So, as Bob indicated, that will decrease phone calls. But as well as... So as Bob indicated, that will decrease phone calls, but as well as also you're creating that paper trail.
I think it's like any system, I mean, it's a great system if it's implemented. And it has to have that follow-through. I mean, it's really essentially like a project management tool, but if it's not followed through, it could ultimately almost be a bigger headache because then now you have notification, but the follow-through isn't there. So we have to make sure we have the checks and balances within the system. I'm not sure that it works internally in the system or it's internally beyond that that the staff has to follow it.
We can set it up to where there's a number of individuals receiving the notification if a task hasn't been fulfilled. So that will create the checks and balances, because if it gets escalated, if you will, to Office of the City Manager, then we can in turn as well communicate directly with the department. So there should be nothing that is falling through the cracks. And as you indicated, this only works as well as it's utilized. So for staff, it's going to be important that if we do receive a phone call, that we are putting these in the computer, as well as for residents at home to be inserting the information in email.
Okay.
I'm just going to go back to the slide about using ClerkBase, and I know we're kind of running low on time here, so I'll try to wrap it up. ClerkBase works similar to GovQA in that it is a web-based solution. ClerkBase, it's a document and retrieval solution that makes public documents available with a higher degree of transparency. Basically, the -- this is kind of how it works from the staff level and what the vendor does for us. We prepare our agendas in minutes like we would normally do, and we drop it to a website where we have its password protected. And they host it and post it for us on their ClerkBase site, which is meshed with the City of Lake Forest website. And so besides this ClerkBase logo, you don't really know you've been launched out to a different website. So this is -- Karina, if you could just show the mock real quick, just jump to it. So we can kind of wrap it up here. This is kind of the mock site that the vendor is working on for us. This is also going to include besides city council agenda and minutes, which is kind of the pilot program that we're trying right now. If it seems to really work well for us, we'd like to add other board and commission packets in the future. This also, and I was very happy to negotiate this, this company is based out of the east coast. They're based out of Rhode Island. They've been around for 15 years, and they are a reputable company. I checked several references. In fact, DuPage County, I think, is getting ready to go live with them as well. They also, in their efforts to try to break into the Midwest, if you will, they are going to host our entire city code for free. Basically, that's going to make it totally text-searchable to anyone that wants to use it, residents outside, anybody that wants to utilize the ClerkBase part of our site. Karina, if you could just pull -- click on code of ordinances on the left so you can see, they've already started to enter a lot of our data there. For anybody that wants to view a portion of the code, they're looking for, say, anything we have on dogs in our city code. They want the dog leash law. They want to know what do we have in our code about dog bites, dog tags. You put in the word dog, and anything that we have in our entire city code comes up instantly. It comes up by relevance. If you can see towards the bottom, chapter six is our animal code, 100%, and then it goes down from there. So you can scroll down, you can print it, you can email it out, you can email it to yourself, so you can reference it later, you can save it to your desktop. It's a very useful tool, and this, as far as answering freedom of information requests, this is probably one of the biggest requests is, you know, getting copies of different portions of the code because they go onto our website and they're not exactly sure what they're searching for or what part of the code to find it in. So this is just an example. It's not complete. We just signed the contract with them. So this is already what they've tried to do for us for tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. But it appears that it's going to be very useful for the residents, and it's very easy to use.
What is the cost on all this?
For ClerkBase, I want to say it's definitely under $10,000 a year. What was it, Karina? Maybe $6,000 or $7,000? It wasn't a very expensive
No, it was less than $8,000.
Program.
And regarding the GovQA, there's a one-time training cost of $2,500 and then a yearly subscription of $3,200.
Okay.
So it's very economical for us.
And typically, to put the city code of our size on the website, that's worth about $5,000 or $6,000, and that I negotiated for him to do for free.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
We have a -- yeah, we have obviously a very involved community here, residents are amazingly active, and I think this is a terrific thing to enhance that and allow that. What it does do, obviously, is it shifts a little bit or increases an obligation upon staff members to make sure that things that aren't already automatically on get tended to and answer, and questions are answered and so on. So it -- I'm not sure how much it's going to be used in terms of Q and A more than the ClerkBase, but there could be a potential for a lot of -- a lot of work to respond to residents that are already active. So that's just an observation. Last question is, what is the calendar for turnkey for this?
Okay. For -- sorry about that. For the GovQA, we are hoping to have it full, live by mid-October. So there's going to be an extremely -- a lot of work upfront, if you will, because of the fact that right now, staff is collecting all of the data to determine what departments are going to be answering the potential concerns or issues, determining appropriate turnaround time, appropriate responses, as well as collecting the data for our frequently asked questions. So there's a lot of work upfront, but we envision that this is going to be successful as well as assist with consistency.
Any other comments or questions?
And then timing for ClerkBase? Do we know that?
Probably a little bit before that, because there's less work on the front end. Probably end of September is my guess.
And we do plan on communicating this out, of course, to the residents. We're going to have it on channel 17. We're going to be having our typical methods of communication.
Right. Thank you very much. Appreciate both your work on this. Look forward to seeing more on that. Fifth and last, or second to last item, opportunity for public comment on our committee whole. Seeing none, I will ask for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is closed.
We're getting a lot of feedback on
Lot of feedback.